And welcome to the November 4th, 2024, meeting of the Fitchburg School Committee. I call this meeting to order. Please be advised that FATV is conducting an audio and video recording of this meeting for public broadcast. So I ask if anyone in the audience is recording this meeting, please identify yourself for the record now. Seeing none. Now I ask that everyone put electronic devices into silent mode. Silence of the phone. Here's my phone. Great. Just make sure that I do that myself. Okay. Okay. So we have salute to the flag. Can I have student representative member Selena Muad lead us into the salute to the flag?
My flag is.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you. Next on our agenda, we have school committee members and student reports. School committee chair report, none at this time. We have the report of the resource subcommittee.
Resource subcommittee. We met on September 26th, and we went over the grants to be submitted and accepted. And those are on tonight's agenda. Nicholas Packard was not there for enrollment update. And what was the figure, Jim? Do you remember for?
I don't remember the number.
October 1st. It's over 100 new students that have been registered.
Yeah. 113.
113.
113.
113.
Just a slight correction. It was October 22nd. Was that last one?
22nd. Yep.
Okay. I think those are the minutes. Okay. Those, yeah. Got to get some new glasses again. So that was it for resource. It was a short meeting.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the committee members? Okay. We'll have school building needs.
School building needs. Daniel Oterson gave his, again, his outstanding school building maintenance update. Hopefully you all got your copies of that, all of the number of things that took place. Just a few of them. Hampshire Fire had to come to South Street to address some discrepancies that were found during the sprinkler inspections. All discrepancies were addressed and everything is back to normal. Chain link fence fixed near the neighbor's property at Rhine Gold School. Three different toilets and different bathrooms, which we hear about occasionally. What Memorial were clogged, overflowing multiple times. School building maintenance custodial staff had to get Rotomann to come in and clear them. They're all set now. Room 105 Long Joe had a steam leak. That was Royal Steam Repair came in and repaired it. School building maintenance grounds conducted their monthly maintenance at Crocker Field. This consists of sweeping the field of any debris. The magnet is attached to the sweeper to pick up any metal that may be on the field. Then brought in groomers and brought the field to fill the low spots on the field. There was a report of a gas smell at Long Joe. Fire department came, Unitil came. There was no gas leak at all. And you talked about the heating season. Everything is good with the boilers are up and running right now, and we're in good shape with our boilers. That was, any questions?
All right. Seeing none. Thank you, Mrs. Stevens. The report of the policy subcommittee.
Okay. We met on October 23rd with Tracy Novick from the Mass Association of School Committees. We completed Section H and got through a good part of Section I, and we will meet again on December 11th from 5:00 to 7:00 at South Street.
All right. Any questions, comments? All right. Thank you. Student support subcommittee.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Our meeting today was postponed until, I believe, next week. However, as Chair of the Student Support Subcommittee, I feel compelled to do everything in my power, everything that I can, or say what needs to be said in order to support the students. I am extremely concerned about the incident over at Goodrich Academy. I was there for, nope, I was, excuse me.
Point of order.
I was there for six months.
This is not, this is not a student support report.
Yes, sir. It is.
Committee didn't meet. You can do this under communication.
I was there for six months and there was nothing, I didn't see anything that took place there that endangered the life of the students or caused the type of incidents that are taking place there. It took a special type of administrator, I'm not accusing nobody else, I'm just saying it took a special type of administrator to be able to deal with those students. I saw the relationship that was developed with Ms. Curry, Principal Curry, and with the students and with the parents. And none of those things that are taking place, I mean, I am very concerned. What is, what's going on? Can I get some assistance? Or what's going on? The students of Fitchburg Public Schools deserve better than what they're being receiving now. So what are we going to do about these things? This is my question. Thank you, Madam Mayor, and forgive me if I was out of order, but the students of Fitchburg Public School deserve better. Thank you.
Comments or questions on the Student Support Subcommittee report?
I just, again, a comment. Goodrich School has an excellent principal, acting principal there right now, Ms. Jen Fisher, who has been an outstanding administrator in the Fitchburg Public Schools for many years and is doing an excellent job. So I just want to, Ms. Fisher is an excellent administrator at Goodrich Academy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just a point of clarification. Our next meeting is actually the 18th.
The 18th, first.
In November.
Student Support Subcommittee?
Yes.
At 5:00 PM?
Yes.
Thank you. Any further? Okay. Thank you. Seeing none. School Personnel Subcommittee, no report at this time. Student Representative Report.
Prepare your calendars to attend the Breakfast for the Bands at Leominster High School on November 24th. It's anytime from 8:00 AM to 11:00 AM, and it's a great opportunity to watch the FHS and LHS bands perform. Admission is $8, but kids under eight eat free, and all proceeds go to support the bands. Speaking of the FHS band, they just attended their final New England Scholastic Band Association competition, and they won a gold medal. So congrats. Grades close this Friday, the 8th, and report cards will be given out on the 22nd during advisory. On Thursday, Unified Basketball will be having a game against Leominster, at Leominster High. A dodgeball tournament will be held on the 20th at 2:15. Students can sign up with teams of seven by November 15th, and there's a fee of $5 per person signed up. And Powderpuff has been rescheduled to November 7th at 5:30 PM at Crocker Field. Seniors will go against juniors, and sophomores will go against freshmen.
Monday, December 9th, is the official date for the National Honor Society induction ceremony. Wednesday, December 11th, is the welcome dinner at the Old Mill for the three sophomores who have been inducted and to step up to excellence. Officer Figueroa's tenure as Memorial's Resource Officer has ended, and Memorial thanks him for his service and wishes him luck. There is now a new school resource officer, Officer Ishmael Sanchez. Pennyworth to raise money for the eighth grade Washington DC trip begins on November 12th through a partnership at the Fitchburg Art Museum. Seventh graders from Memorial and Long Joe will be going on a field trip to its Discover Egypt exhibit. Initial plans are being made at Memorial for a turkey trot run on November 27th to encourage students and families to donate canned goods. There will be no school tomorrow, and there is also no school next Monday because of Veterans Day. That is all. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
Just one. James or Selena, what's the best way to obtain tickets for the Breakfast for the Bands?
Oh, yes. Let me look at the flyer. I think I have it.
I know that at the Leominster Mayor's Office, Fitchburg High School, Leominster High School.
Central office.
Central office.
And central office.
Yep.
Thank you.
I think you can also get it from anybody who's part of the Rotary Club.
Rotary Club.
Yep. Okay. Excellent.
Hall of Fame induction ceremony was held yesterday. Wonderful ceremony. Had a great wolf. And we invited 40 students from Fitchburg High School. And as Alan said, hopefully, probably be a future Hall of Fame from one of those, one or more of those students who attended yesterday.
Thank you. Okay. Next on our agenda, we have approval of the minutes from the meeting of October 21st.
Motion to approve the October 21st meeting?
Second.
We have a motion and second to approve the minutes from the meeting on October 21st. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. That is unanimous. Those minutes are approved. Thank you. Okay. Next, we have communications. Any communications? Nope. Okay. Seeing none. We'll move on to public comment. Public comments have no more than five minutes of length. We're offered to be submitted to the superintendent by noon today. Did you receive any comments?
I did not.
I invite anyone in the audience who wishes to speak to please approach the podium, identify yourself, and be free to make a public comment, no more than five minutes in length.
Perfect. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, School Committee. Some of you may know me, some of you might not, but my name is Lieutenant Jeffrey Howe. One of my duties here with the Fitchburg Police Department is I oversee our school resource officers. So ultimately, any big school issue that happens to take place, I respond to the call. So I know, Dr. Knight, you brought up Goodrich Academy. I heard that call last week. So ultimately, I responded to that call. I was the incident commander in charge of that call. So I can, I wanted to tell you what I saw, observed as an independent person, responded to that call. So obviously, we heard the call through dispatch. Officers responded immediately to the school. We entered the school immediately, without any delay. We immediately went in to try to ascertain what was going on. We had an idea of, you know, what was taking place, but we wanted to figure it out from there. Upon entering, I immediately found Mrs. Fisher, and Mrs. Fisher and myself spoke. We put the school into lockdown immediately. There was no hesitation by Mrs. Fisher or any of the other staff about putting the school into lockdown. We chose to put the school into lockdown so we could maintain a safe environment. Once the school was in lockdown, we ended up finding a victim of a stab wound. And we also found the person, the accused person of stabbing the person. We approached that person, and we were able to apprehend that person after an investigation. What I witnessed there, I witnessed nothing more than professionalism. The principal was on top of everything. She was giving out direction. She was working with the police department. She was doing about 50 things at the same time, and I can honestly say I was impressed with what I saw her do. Not only did she deal with us, but she had to deal with the teachers. And as far as the staff, what I witnessed, I witnessed compassion from the staff. I witnessed staff members' console and students. As we know, it was a very stressful time. Nothing but professionalism. So I wanted to take this moment and just say that I felt Mrs. Fisher did a fabulous job at that school. What happened is a tragedy, but make no mistake about it, unfortunately, sometimes things are going to happen in schools or anywhere, and no matter, you can do everything right, and things still happen. That's just, unfortunately, that's how the world is nowadays. Things happen on airplanes when you go through security. Things happen in courthouses when you go through security to get in. Things happen at hospitals, you go through security to get into a hospital. Things happen at sporting events, you go through security. Things happen, unfortunately. It's how you deal with the thing that happens to prevent it from getting worse is what matters most. And in this particular case, all I can say is she was professional. The superintendent responded with Mr. Roach. I interacted with them to help, we helped each other with communications. They acted very professional. They acted appropriately. And my officers who responded acted appropriately as well. We took care of the incident. So that's all I wanted to say, and I thank you for this moment about Goodrich. In closing, I'd like to bring up Officer Figueroa. Officer Figueroa was the school resource officer at Memorial Middle School. He recently switched jobs within our department. He's now working strictly with mental health substance abuse issues with the department. He's working hand in hand with our clinician. So we're looking forward to having him in that role. He did such a great role as an SRO. He's going to do a great role working for me in this new title. As far as the new officer that was picked, I don't know if the chief mentioned it, but I'll mention it just in case. We had interviews, Mr. Thompson, and also Mr. Walker, myself, and Captain Jeanine, all had interviews a few weeks ago with three officers that put their name in through the Fitchburg Police Department. And ultimately, after the lengthy interview process, we all decided to pick Officer Sanchez. Officer Sanchez has been with the department for roughly five years. He's bilingual, and he represents our Hispanic population, and he also has students in the public schools. So we're very happy to have him working at Memorial Middle School, and I'm sure he's going to do just as well as Officer Figueroa did. So I want to welcome him to Memorial Middle School. So thank you very much, and have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lieutenant Howe.
Thank you so much. Madam Mayor?
Yes.
May I ask you a question? May I be provided with a name and the hospital maybe so that I can visit the person that was, you know, injured? Is that possible, just to show my respect as Student Support Subcommittee, or that's illegal?
Not possible.
That's not illegal.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Any further public comment? Thank you.
I'm the school resource officer, thank you. I'm the school resource officer at Fitchburg High School, and I also, the school resource officer at Goodrich. And I also responded to that call. And I can say, from the time I got there, everybody was doing something to be productive and helping. There was no, I'm in charge, you're in charge, like Lieutenant Howe said, complete professionalism. What's even more important, and I'm there every day from 11:00 to 3:00 to help ease these kids back into the school system. The interaction between the students, the staff, the teachers, everybody is second to none. I'm going to say this next comment, but I'm not here, I hope you don't take it as an insult. Anybody that's on this committee and has not gone down there to see what's going on, go down there. Reassure those kids that it's going to be all right every day. You are as much a part of this as I am, as the mayor, the superintendent, the principal, and this and that. And I'm reading comments on social media, and the only thing that came to mind was a line from Rick Pitino when he was the coach of the Boston Celtics. Ms. Curry is not coming through that door. We have a team in place, and why isn't the committee and the school and the parents working what we have in place as opposed to what we had in place? Whatever those issues are, those are issues that aren't affecting me. But we have a team in place, and why aren't we working with what we have? That we're letting people just spew stuff off the cuff? And that goes for everybody. Let's support each other instead of tearing each other down. I'm at that school, and I'm telling kids it's going to be all right, and then they'll say, well, what about this, mister? And what about that? And what do you want me to say to them? When we can't get along as adults, how does that transpire over to those students? We always hear the famous line, it takes a village. Well, I don't know where this village is. Maybe they're on holiday. But we got to wake up and do better. And that goes for everybody. Me, you guys, the staff, parents, everybody. We're not getting any better until we get better. So I appreciate your time, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
May I please have your name? Thank you.
Okay. Any further public comment? All right. Seeing none. We'll move on to our agenda to the superintendent's report.
Thank you. Tonight, we have three presentations, the last three for this school year. It's our three elementary schools. Up first, we have Crocker Elementary School. We have Principal Bolak here this evening. Come on up, Casey.
Wow, that was, that was nice. I like these guys. So hi, everybody on School Committee. This is our, our one time a year we get to really come and see you, so it's always a pleasure to see you. I will extend an invitation as well. Please come by. Yes, you can come by and see the new building too, but like, we wouldn't mind seeing you hanging out with our kids in our, in our building. That's still a building too. So anytime, you're more than welcome. I'm going to throw a lot of data at you, a lot of numbers. If at any point you guys feel like you need to ask a question, stop, ask. I'll do my best. I feel like I'm more of a talker than a number guy, but we'll give it our best shot. So, Mr. Thompson?
I'm sorry.
I don't know. I can't, okay, that's okay. So as you can tell, the new school takes up a lot of our time, but it is going to be awesome. And so it is moving right along. Its plan, the plans are to be in there next year. And so, you know, we have pictures of the gym, the cool skylights, some of the glass, and it's, it's a beautiful building. It's going to be a highly functional building. We can't wait to get the staff and students in there. It's something that they deserve. You know, as Dr. Knight says, right? The kids and the staff of Fitchburg deserve something like this, so we're really excited about it. So we're in meetings all the time. So now we'll get, we'll get into the great stuff here, the numbers. So this is our accountability percentile and our status at Crocker Elementary School. Our accountability percentile is at 32%. It's actually down 2% from some 34. But our, our progress towards our improvement targets went up from 53% up to 64. So, you know, sometimes the numbers don't jive completely, but, you know, we did make a lot of progress, as you'll see in some of the numbers, specifically with math, but we can move on towards our, our targets. This is really tough to see. This is a really breakdown of the points that you get for each, I would say, you know, for our achievement scores, our growth scores. We don't get anything for high school completion. Our progress towards obtaining English language proficiency and some additional indicators like our chronic absenteeism. So, you know, we got a lot of points across the board, and I'll get into that as we move. Honestly, we'll get into a little more details as we get to the next slide, so no need to go back and forth with all that. But thank you, Mr. Thompson.
And School Committee members, you should have that in your packet in front of you.
Yep. So this is for our literacy, our ELA achievement scores. You can tell there's improvement kind of across the board. Not as much improvement as we would have liked to see. We had some decline with our Ls and former Ls, and that's something that unfortunately will be kind of a theme as we go through this. But we did meet our target with our students with disabilities here with, with our ELA. You know, there's, we are, for our all students, you can tell we went up just a half of achievement point. Our goal has been, in our school improvement plan, and I believe you guys have a copy of two, you know, our goal is to get back to those 2019 pre-pandemic levels of 500 or better. And so we're not changing those goals. I know that our target's only at 491 or so, but, you know, where our target really is at 500. So that's the plan. For math, went much better than our ELA. We met targets and/or exceeded in targets in most of our categories, even in our Ls and former Ls. We improved but below our target. We had a great year. Our overall for all students is at 494.4, really close to that 500 mark, and that's the goal. We're looking to get there this year. Science went really well for us. So at the elementary level, only fifth grade takes science, and as you guys know, with the restricting, fifth grade is new to the elementary levels too. So as a school, we're figuring out this science instruction and how to do it. And we feel like we made some pretty big strides in our fifth grade science last year. Made a lot of growth, and our achievement scores show it. We improved and exceeded all targets at all subgroups in science. So it was great.
Oh, no. Sorry, Casey.
No, you're doing great. That's fine. We can keep going.
You're on now?
Yeah. 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 You're doing great. So this is just a little bit of a different chart. Back to ELA, and we're starting to look at our growth percentiles. Solid growth is between 40 and 60 percentiles. So you can see that all of our growth percentiles here, if, he's gonna, he's fixing it. I have faith in our superintendent.
It's paused? I have no idea why it paused.
Okay.
Give us one second, Casey.
Yeah, no, it's okay.
Resume. There we go. Sorry about that.
No, you got it. Maybe. Yeah.
ELA growth.
Yeah, there they are.
There they are.
So you can see with our ELA, we did make good growth. We're up over 40 in all of our subgroups. It's saying it's typical growth and on a low level, but, you know, we, you really want to be in that SGP of between 40 to like 60 would be considered high. So, you know, we're, while we're making growth, it's, we still want to do more. We want to be able to get up into that 60 range, high 50 range, so we can get our achievement levels even higher. And you can see that with our math scores, you know, most of them were in that 50 or above range, and that's where we really had higher achieving, achievement scores and where we really kind of took off last year when it comes to math. So our growth scores, we're really proud of here overall, even with our Ls and former Ls there. That's looking good. Yeah. And so this is, this is a slide I wish I could skip, to be honest with you, but we're not gonna. You know, this is our access testing. This is where we, our students that are Ls or former Ls, and it measures our progress towards obtaining English language proficiency, and we had quite a large drop for this. We've been working as a team, checking in with Eva Kelly, who's our, our ML director in the district, and trying to figure out how we can better attack this, because in reality, our students will be taking this test, I don't know if anybody knows offhand the number, but it's probably 30, how many?
25.
In 25 school days. And so, you know, we feel like we just got back. We feel like I'm just standing in front of you now in early November. Yet come early January, our students are taking this access test. And so what does that mean? How do we, how do we utilize this data even better and quickly and attack it? So, you know, we've, we've had professional developments. We are showing everybody in the school what the access test looks like, how they could help within the general ed curriculum and help prepare these students as well, doing some different small group work. And we're really trying to get the numbers at least back up to where they were the previous year. So that, that's a huge area of growth for us. And we did get all of our points for chronic absenteeism, so we did improve. We exceeded our target overall, but we're still not good. And I'll just be that blunt about it. We still have over 31% of our kids chronically absent. And it's hard. It, it's something that we, as a, as an elementary school, work together with. We've had meetings with the district about working with outside agencies, local agencies to, to meet with families, just to continue doing what we've always been doing, but doing it more and even a more. it more and even a more structured way. And so, we're, we're looking to keep working on that number. You'll probably be seeing different, different letters, different flyers, different social media posts about attendance and how important it is. We do attendance awards every month during our whole school morning meeting on which grade had the best attendance. There's incentives and different things that we try to do. So, we'll keep doing that work, but it's, it's tough, difficult work, to be honest. And then finally, with our school improvement plan, so what I was, what I worked on and tried to do is make sure that they aligned with our district objectives and commitments that we have. So, we're able to, you know, continue our work with our curriculum and learning targets and success criteria. We're continuing our work with the positivity project and expanding that with a new program, student information system called Panorama and how to use that data effectively in social and emotional learning. Some student surveys and, and staff input into how to, to really get to the whole child there. Making sure our staff feel like they're a part of decisions and a part of our community, which I hope they do because we have, no offense to my colleagues, I believe the best staff in the city. Sorry about that. And I do believe that wholeheartedly. You know, we, part of my, my job and our admin team's job is to continuously look at the resources that we have in the building and making sure that we're utilizing them in the best way possible. So, that means every three, six weeks, we're looking at different Title, Title I schedules, you know, Tier Two interventions, working really hard to make sure the kids that need some extra help are, are getting the extra help and that all of our curriculum and everything's aligned to what we're trying to do and, and all those resources, whether it's budget or people, to make sure that we can get the, kind of like the best bang for our buck there. You know, increase our family engagement as well, whether it's a whole school morning meeting or the Halloween dance that we just had. You know, they're trying to have more events at the school as we continue to keep welcoming people into the building and looking forward to that new building where I feel like we're gonna have to start pushing people away, I hope, all right? You know, and then just really continuing to build on our partnerships. Our, our pathways team, with our OT and PT are starting like a, a parent support group. And they're, they're gonna be holding a meeting in December, and so, if you're interested in that, please reach out. But just developing new partnerships, expanding old partnerships, like we're trying to work with the high school and getting some kids in, working either with our, our after-school program or mentoring, as, as the seniors are kind of on that last month, something that we did last year and we look to, looking forward to doing it again. But those are our, our school goals aligned with our district goals. And you know, a lot of work, a lot of great people, excited to continue the work here in Fitchburg. This is my seventh year as principal, which, yeah, I know.
Wow.
I can't, can't believe it. Yeah, I've been here for a little while. And you know, I, I love Crocker. I love the city. We're, we're invested in it. And I'm, I'm happy to show up to work every day with the group that's there. Like, the teachers are literally second to none, and that's just not the teachers, the parents, the admin team that I have, our, our custodial, our clerical, our food service people. It's a good punch, and it makes it hard to not keep showing up every day. And then, when you add the kids to it, you're like, okay, I'm here. So, happy to answer. Any questions? Yes. Dr. Knight?
Yeah, Dr. Knight.
Principal Bolak, I just wanna say thank you so much for everything that you have done, that you're doing, and what you will be doing for the students here in the Fitchburg Public School System. Thank you very much. Do not give up. Hang on in there.
I'm trying.
Thank you.
Yep, we won't.
I have a question.
Yes, please.
What's the positivity project?
Here we go. All right. So, positivity project, better known as P2, is a, a social and emotional learning curriculum that we use during our morning meeting. And it's, it's based around 28 character traits that we, that has a, it's almost like a plug and play for teachers, where they take 10 minutes or so every morning and we, we go over different character traits, talk about, have videos showing examples, how we can do that within the school. And then, once a month, we have a grade level meeting, I'm sure, that you're probably familiar with, where our grade, a grade level will present one of those character traits with a song and talk about it with the whole, the whole building. So, the whole school will go there. Parents of the grade level that's presenting will come. And it's a, it's just a, a good event. Kind of makes you feel good about what the kids are doing. So, every day, we start the day with the positivity project. So, that's, we have a 25-minute morning meeting block. Some of that is typical morning meeting, sometimes greeting, sometimes things along those lines. Sometimes it's morning work, like, hey, let's, let's get our brain going. But all the time, it's positivity project.
Yes, Debbie.
Casey, I'm sitting here thinking, you know, listening to the way you're speaking about the staff, everyone. I always refer to it as my second family, as you know. I love Crocker. But you're like that unsung hero. It's how I, I look at it, because you do what you do, not expecting any recognition for anything. And you're, you kind of keep yourself right there, but letting it happen with everyone knowing the support's there. You always say, you got this.
I do.
But you really, you'd say that, the teachers, students, because you truly believe it. You don't just say it as a saying that's everywhere today. You believe that, and it helps make your staff and students believe in themselves.
Thanks, Debbie.
And then, on top of it all, this fabulous building that's going on. Oh, my gosh, I can't wait to go back again. You're, you're a big part of that, and it's just like, it's a part of the day. It's a part of the job. And you've got it so that the staff and students know what's happening, but it doesn't interfere with business going on in the school. So, there's a lot to be said for what's been going on since that ground broke. And I just know that I appreciate, I, I see more than others have, just because I came from there.
Yeah.
But I just want you to hear it, that I appreciate you, you.
Thanks, Debbie. I mean, I, that you got this literally came from honestly just positive self-talk on the day I took over as principal. It was on a PD day, and the former principal and superintendent just kind of walked out. And I was like, hey, you got this, we got this, everybody. And I said it probably 30 times during that next half hour. And so, it, it went from a running joke to really a belief that's deep, a, a part of me and how I, how I feel leadership is and how it should be. So, thanks for saying that stuff. That's nice. Appreciate it, Debbie.
Yes, Lindsay.
So, I know personally, just because I have a child in Crocker right now, that there have been some changes that have been made, and I think they're positive changes. One of the parent engagement things that you guys are doing with, actually with 21st Century is like, I think you guys are calling it an open house?
Well, I mean, well, we had an open house, and we're, and we're doing some, like, the 21st Century program is gonna have some parents coming in and, and looking at that.
Called an open house?
Yeah.
Called something else? Observation?
Yeah, something along those lines.
Okay. Is that Wednesday, the first one, I think?
I believe so. Yep. So, people can come in and take a look at what's happening in our after-school program and how it's doing and what's that.
I think that's at 4:00 for any Crocker parents that are listening.
Yes. 4:00, I believe, on Wednesday for our after-school program. That'll be fun. Yeah.
Great. All right. Thank you, Mr. Bolak. Well done.
Thanks. Thank you.
Appreciate you all that you do. All right. Next up, we have McKay Elementary with Principal Sutengas and her team. Come on up, Sue, and please introduce your team members.
Can we make you have up there a little bit bigger?
What's that?
Is there any way you can put the slides a little bit bigger?
I can try, Mrs. Tingus.
Because I didn't bring any paper with me, and my eyes are old.
Go on, Mrs. Tingus, I'll even make it easier for you.
Hi, as Mr. Thompson said, I'm Sue Tingus. I'm the principal at McKay Elementary. I have a returning staff member here, one of my assistant principals, Joyce Chapman. And then, this year, we have two new administrators. I have Sarah Hopkins as an assistant principal, and we have Lily Mendonza, who is our SBSA. So, those are two new staff members.
SBSA?
Student Program Support Administrator. So, she oversees special education administration at the school. I don't know why we didn't just say special.
Well, I usually say to parents, she's the special ed administrator of my building. That makes it a little bit more easy to understand.
Trying to learn all the acronyms I can.
It's probably more accurate of what she does, but, so I'm gonna start off. I did tell Lily and Sarah that they didn't have to do a lot of talking since they're new. They weren't there last year, so Joyce will join in in a little bit. So, one of the things that I wanna talk about with the new staff, we decided to do some new structures at our school. We started planning this with the old foursome staff. So, we felt that over the last couple of years at McKay, that we've been just kind of running around, putting out fires, doing a lot of discipline, doing a lot of behavior management and, and that type of stuff. And really, a principal and assistant principals, we should be instructional leaders. And we felt like we weren't really being able to get in there and do that. So, we came up with this new structure. So, we are all assigned to different grade levels, kind of like, we call it a house structure. So, I, I look after second and third grade. Ms. Chapman does first grade. Ms. Mendonza does fourth grade, and Ms. Hopkins does fifth grade. And these are in addition to our other duties as assigned. So, it is very busy, but this is allowing us to get into classrooms much more often. It's allowing us to make connections with those teachers and those students, because then the students are seeing us come through their classroom, you know, four, five, six times a day, when it's our day to be in there. So, we all have a day of the week that we do PLCs just with those, with the grade level. So, for an example, on Tuesdays, I'm with second grade. So, I, I start off the morning with 45 minutes, and we have a structure that, that we go through. So, we start looking at student work. We're trying to dive in, seeing what's going on, where are the pluses, where are the minuses? Then, they go on later on that day during their planning period, their common planning time, with the coaches, and they continue that work where they do actual planning to help improve the instruction that is going on in the classroom. And then, on Tuesdays, I'm lucky enough, and on, on all of our days, we get, we shut our walkie-talkie off, and we're just, just in second grade. She's just in fifth grade. And we, we walk through those hallways, really get down, sit down next to kids, what are you learning? What are you doing? Co-planning, excuse me, co-planning with teachers, maybe you're, maybe we might actually like substitute in the class, so the teacher can, if they wanna go see another teacher who they heard is doing something fabulous, so we'll take over their class for that time. So, it's really allowing us to, to really dive in and really be true instructional leaders, which we're hoping is going to help us to improve, because as you know, we are a turnaround school. So, we're really trying to do everything we can to help the school turn around. We've also decided this year that we were gonna do all of our building-based PD, was really gonna be surveys with the teachers, what do you want? What do you need? And then, we're having our own teachers that we know are experts in some of these areas giving that PD. And so far, the response we have gotten has been phenomenal. The teachers love it. They're really invested in it. They said that they've learned some good things. They have found out that, you know, Mrs. So-and-so does something really good, so I really need to get in there, and they can come to us, can you watch my class, you know, during this math period? And we teach, we come back to our teaching roots. We're in there, teaching, because we're all former teachers. So, it's really giving us a chance, I think, to be very strong instructional leaders. And hopefully, next year, when I'm standing here in front of you, we can all celebrate that we are out of the turnaround. And you know, we're planning, when that happens, it's not if, it's when that happens, we're gonna have a big party, and you know, you're all are invited. So, now, on to the data.
Sorry. I went too fast. Go ahead.
So, as you can see, and I know you, you have this in front of you, we remain at, in the 6th percentile. We didn't go down, we didn't go up. Where I, you'll hear, you know, you'll probably have seen across the district, people have gone down a couple of points here and there. So, honestly, I'm taking this as a win, that we stayed the same. We did not go down. So, we are doing some things good, and we know, obviously, with the 6, you know, percentile accountability, we have a lot of work to still do. And, and we're trying to figure all that out, and we're trying to make sure that we give our students, because we know our students deserve the best, and we know our teachers are much better than what we're seeing here. Because despite what Mr. Bolak thinks, we have the best staff. And we really do.
There's a little bit of a healthy competition.
There's a lot of competition between, between us. And we stayed, our progress towards improvement, we stayed right around the same again. We didn't have a big spike, we didn't have a big drop. We stayed right around the same area. Hope you're already on the next one. So, looking at this, we noticed that we, we did lose some points in ELA this year. I don't know exactly what happened. We're, we're still diving into data. We're still trying to figure that out with our ILT, with our grade level PLCs, with all the different people in, in, within our school. Where we did see some, some improvement was in our math. We had some really good math numbers, and that'll come across more when you get to the achievement, if you wanna move on to that.
Go on.
Yep.
Yeah. Because I feel like that, the next slides will dive in deeper. So, as you can see in the ELA, there's, there's a lot of change, negative change. There is one big plus that we see. We really focused on our lowest performing students last year, or this, yeah, last year. And we noticed that they actually increased their score by 1.5%. So, that's good. So, now, we're trying to take that and emulate that with our other subgroups, because we obviously did some good things with them, but they were able to make some, some growth. So, that was through small groups, through double dipping them in, you know, phonics or reading, or in math, whatever their area of need was. That is just smaller groups, more intentional planning with our teachers on focusing on those students. So, we're gonna take that information, we've taken that information, and we're gonna try to make sure that it is spread out amongst our other groups as well. Math.
Quick question?
Yes.
And I should've, saving the best for last, the three elementary schools, and I should've asked this question before. It just popped into my head. How or who determines your target number for the school year?
The state.
The state does. Okay. Okay.
And typically, the target numbers are not like unattainable. They're, they're definitely attainable. They're very reasonable, yes. So, we look at our math achievement, and we're really proud of what we did in math. The year before, we did really well in ELA and not so much in math. And I don't, maybe we focused too much on the math, I don't know, because we dropped in the ELA, but our math is a little bit more solid. Our lowest performing students, again, we got all four points from that subgroup, which was really great. We're very happy about that. Our ESL students, our low-income, all of our students, you know, they were right on track at a two. We'd like to see a three or a four there, but two is okay. We have our, our multi-race, non-Hispan We have our multirace, non-Hispanic Latinos, they got us all four points as well. So there are some good things happening at McKay in the math area, as well as the ELA, but we do have some good things, we just hope, we need to improve, we need to get better at the things that we're doing. And then for science, the year before, we had no points, we actually got a point this year, so that's looking good, because as Mr. Bolak had stated, our teachers never had taught science before, so last year was really the first time, because they were fourth-grade teachers, and they looped last year into our fifth grade. So that was their first time in fifth grade, and that was their first time teaching science. And they did a lot of looking at projects on their own, and trying to create things, and trying to make it hands-on, and fun, and exciting, for the students to really want to enjoy and learn about science.
Just to clarify, Ms. Tingas, I think you meant that they didn't have to, we didn't have fifth grade, and we didn't focus on science.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
We did teach science before.
We did teach science, yes. Thank you.
My heart may have just skipped a beat.
Thank you, I didn't mean to give anyone a heart attack. Yes, they taught science and social studies, but it wasn't a test grade level, is what I meant by that. Thank you for recognizing that.
He does pay attention.
He does, he does, he pays attention. And I'm glad someone did, because that is not the message I want to get out there. So we're looking again at our growth for ELA, and then the growth, oh, for math, but I have this all in one sheet, sorry. Looking at the ELA growth, you know, we have some typical growth that's on the low end, and then we just have some low growth. We know we need to move that. We need to move that to a higher growth. We know we have a lot of work to do. It does not seem like there's a lot to celebrate at McKay, but there really is. The math, we've done some pretty solid things in math. We've gotten like two points, again, we would like to see that be at a three or higher, absolutely. We feel like we're getting there, as a staff, we feel like we're getting there, we're working hard, those teachers over there are working very hard, our students are working very hard. And hopefully, this, next year at this time, we're going to have something completely different. Looking at the access scores, as Mr. Bolak stated, ours went down a huge amount as well, and I'm not sure why, I don't know if I have the answer to that. I feel like we did the same things that we had done the year before, and we had, you know, they used to call it flapped, now they're calling it felled. We had, you know, we had gotten a lot of students that were no longer classified as an ESL student, that they were former ESL students, and we're really proud of that. And I'm not sure what happened. I do meet with my ESL teachers once a month, and try to get in there and figure out, what are you guys doing, what are we doing, what do you need, what do you need from us, what do the students need? And we're, again, working very hard at what we need to do. I was hoping, you know, last year, I stood here at a six, and I know that I said to some of you all, we wouldn't be there again, we are here. But we're just going to keep doing what we do, we're going to try to keep doing better always, and keep moving forward. I'm going to have Ms. Chapman talk about the chronic absenteeism, because she has worked really hard on this over the last couple of years, along with a couple of guidance counselors, but she can explain more about what she does in that area.
Thank you. So as you can see, we did exceed our target in most of our areas on chronic absenteeism. However, we know we still have more work to do with that. We know that we still have families who need more education in the area of absenteeism, and sending their kids to school on a regular basis. We know that there are some families who need more support with that, and so we've aligned ourselves with different agencies to provide that support for families. For example, we work closely with MOC, MOC attends our meetings. We send, we have constant communication with DCF to support families that are in need. We send letters to families to let them know when we're concerned about attendance, and we talk a lot with families, either in meetings or by phone, to find out why their child might be missing a lot of school, and in what ways can we support them or help them. So we have worked really hard on this, I do think that we have a long way to go in educating families and continuing to provide that support. But the guidance counselors, as Ms. Tingas said, have worked really hard in connecting with those families and supporting what they need.
So then, that brings us to our school-wide instructional focus, and again, we're working really hard to align everything with the district. I think the district has really, really supported schools on that this year, that everything is aligned, that there's a through line, everything from the very top, right down to the littlest kindergartner. Not that I have kindergarten at my school, but I'm just saying, like, it's really evident that we're all trying to be very aligned and very intentional with what we're teaching and the way we're teaching this year. So our school-wide instructional focus kind of changed, that we want all educators to meet weekly in our PLCs. So again, they meet with us twice a week, like, but it's all in the same day. So on Tuesday, they see just me, and then on Tuesday afternoon, they continue that. So it's almost a 90-minute day, once a week, that they're getting professional learning community around student work, looking at student work, and how do we improve that student work, and what do we need to do to improve that? So that really is our focus this year. We want all students to be able to demonstrate their growth in oral and written language. You know, for a long time, we've been pushing student discourse, and for students to be able to talk to one another academically, and now, we're going to push them even further this year, that they need to start writing academically as well, not just the verbal and oral, but they need to be able to put their thoughts down on paper, and be able to transfer their thoughts onto paper. That is a big thing that we're really pushing at McKay this year. And other than that, our goals are all about the same. We want 100% of our students to show at least 10% growth on ELA and on math. We want our ESL students to show that growth as well. We, you know, our goal number four is we're holding our admin team accountable. We ask teachers all the time to give us feedback, are we doing what you need us to do? We've asked central office, we asked our ILT. So we're always looking for us to kind of be audited, and make sure that we're doing what we have promised to do. And we are working on getting a new PTO. Our PTO president moved away, she was amazing. We have somebody new who's coming in, she is equally amazing, but it is, again, a brand-new PTO. It seems every year, and it's not an excuse, it's just a truth, every year, we seem to have to keep reinventing the wheel at McKay. We have a turnover of staff. So every year, we're just, we're just really working hard at what we need to be doing. But I believe in my staff, I believe in my admin staff, I believe in our district's support, and I think, and I believe in our students, and I think that we will get there. Any questions?
Yes, Dr. Knight.
I'm sorry, can you remind me your name, principal?
Tingas. Tingas, T-I-N-G-A-S.
Yeah, thank you so much. I remember, I want to say, I know it's hard, I know you, you know, you got into a situation that is hard all of you, welcome to the new staff also. But I just want to encourage you to hang on in there, you know. Many people came by and just left our students, you know, they use us as a stepping stone, and then, you know, they're gone. But I want to encourage you to just stay there, because our students need all the help that they can get. So I know, I remember when I went to work in DC over a decade ago, they told us, they appreciated all the hard work that each and everyone was doing, but they would tell us things like, you know, we should work smarter, not harder, to avoid burnout. So I just wanted to just drop that, you know, so that, you know, because we don't want you to get burned out, because we want you to stay there, because, you know, we want to be able to keep, you know, the folks that we have working with our students is just so important. So thank you so much for everything that you're doing, and please, continue to do all that you can. I have not, I have not been at McKay this year, I used to go there quite a bit with the previous principal, but, so as soon as I get an opportunity, I'll be stopping by there to see what you're doing. I like the unison, you know, you got your sneakers on, that means you're really walking out, you know, you're making yourself visible, and I appreciate so much that you are providing the type of support that you mentioned towards the teachers, because the teachers are the ones that are in front of the student every day. And if you provide the resources, and the time, and the training, and the modeling, you know, was it Paul Bambridge Santoro, you talk a lot about role-playing, if you provide that for the teachers, then they'll be, you know, better prepared to provide the best practices for the students, so that they can be, because it's all about teaching and learning, and we want our students to be able to improve. I know it's hard, and I heard what you said, but please, you know, continue, you know, to hang on in there. Thank you.
Any other question? Oh.
So this is the first year you've done where each of you are part of a scientific...
The house structure, yes.
Yes. What's the response been by the teachers and the parents? Positive, yes?
I think it gives them a point person to speak to, so I work with the first-grade team, and I think we've established a lot of comfort in our communications, and, you know, they don't have to wonder, who should I speak with first, they know. So I do think it provides some comfort for them, I think they like the fact that we're really digging into their curriculum with them, that we're looking at that student work, and we understand what they're doing better.
I think they're also more willing to ask for help, because we're with them once a week, every week, so we've built that rapport a little more than usual, and so they're willing to say, I'm having trouble with this, because they know we're going to be there on Thursday, seeing it anyway, so that's, I think, comfortable.
And I don't want you to think that we're ignoring other grade levels. I still get into fifth grade, I still, we do walkthroughs together, all of us, we do walkthroughs, two people, like, we're still seeing all the grade levels, but we have that focus, that intentional focus, that we're asking teachers to have, and we're having that same intentional focus on those grade levels that we lead.
So can I, just piggybacking off kind of what Jim said, but one of the things to say, Tingas, I think what helps is, when you're working with that specific grade level, and you can talk more about this, it allows you to really get to know that grade level, all those standards, and really actually look at student work, and actually plan those lessons, what you're doing with that team weekly, correct?
Yes.
In that, what, 90 minutes, you're meeting with them and planning with them?
Yes, because we go to the coaches, we go to the second part as well with the coaches, so that we're seeing the planning, so that when we do our walkthroughs, we know what their focus is, so that we can better help them and give them better feedback as to what they had actually planned for that lesson.
Lindsay?
Do you feel like, with this new plan, that you're able to build a better rapport and connections with the students of your focus, and that, have you seen a difference in how much they're willing to reach out to you?
I think when the kids see us in their grade levels all the time, they get more comfortable. So at any time, any one of us could go into our grade level and sit down next to any student, and just be like, hey, how's it going, what are you doing? It's not just about academics, you see them in the hallways, they're saying hi more, they're definitely enjoying seeing us through. And I was out sick one day, and, you know, my two-grade level, the kids were like, where were you? And I was like, well, I was out sick, and they're like, are you feeling better now? And I'm like, I am, thank you for asking. So I think it is, it's building that chance, and I feel like, since Joyce and I are, we have the luxury of having younger grade levels, like, we're going to end up knowing, like, every single, there's almost 800 kids at our school, we have the second-biggest school. We're going to get to know every single kid by name, and what they like, and what their dislikes are, and what their, you know, what they do after school, play basketball, or ride their bike, or play video games. So I think it is allowing us to get deeper into a personal level with everybody, as well as diving really deep. I mean, I'm learning things, I never taught third grade, that was the only grade that I haven't taught, and I'm learning things about third grade that I'm like, oh, okay. And the teachers are patient with us, that we might not know every single standard. And I think they know that we have a new appreciation for how hard their job is.
And I think, to your point, one of the big benefits of being fully immersed in the grade level for such a long period of time, on a consistent basis, is truly knowing the learners. We talk endlessly about supporting all learners, but when we can't put faces and learning styles and strengths and needs to those names, it's really, we could just bring in a consultant from across the country, right? So it's important to know them as humans, and our presence in their classroom, to be fully immersed, not with a clipboard, not there to evaluate, not there to measure, but really just be part of that learning community, I think that's really going to pay off.
And I see this as a different level of conversation, as far as analyzing all the data, because you're living it, you're now getting in, and you're seeing, and I'm sure you're probably looking at things, saying, oh, well, this covers this, but we can do a little more with this, and be a part of that.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Sue, thank you, team.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, our last presentation, but certainly not least, is Mr. John Mendes, Principal of Ryangold Elementary School, with his assistant principal, Dr. Chris Jeffcoat.
Thank you for having us tonight, and we're just rookies, but we are enjoying the culture, and getting used to, you know, a very dynamic environment. And so our presentation is a little bit shorter, but starts with...
Mr. Mendes, before you jump in.
Sure.
Can you just introduce both you and John, just talk a little bit about your background, where you came from, and...
Sure, sure, sure. My name is John Mendes, I started here... John Mendes, M-E-N-D-E-S, yes. Actually, excuse me.
Is this a Hispanic name, Mendez?
Portuguese.
Okay, but you pronounce it Mendez.
Mendes, yes, mhm. So actually, my work as an educator started here in Pittsburgh, at Pittsburgh State College. Got a job immediately right out of college in Leamester, and worked in Leamester for 13 years, and then took a job in Westboro as a principal at Armstrong Elementary School, and was there for 15 years, and have traveled back here to be principal here at Ryangold Elementary. Dr. Jeffcoat, Chris Jeffcoat, has joined us after working for four years in the Framingham Public Schools, and previous to that, was here in Pittsburgh, correct?
Yes, so I was a teacher for high school, math and science teacher, for almost 17 years, 10 of which was in Pittsburgh, some at Sizer, and some for Mr. Roach at FHS. I've been, last three years, I was the STEM Director in Framingham, which was a lovely commute, and I'm excited to come back to Pittsburgh and learn how, learn the principal role.
Yes, it's been a great beginning, and so Chris and I share many similarities in terms of our underpinnings and foundations of what we believe, what good education and good community look like. And so, to that end, we've worked really hard for the first three months, just getting our feet, hiring good people, you know, adopting better schedules, we adopted Crocker's schedule, thank you, Casey. And so, we have, you know, new schedules, new school-wide PBS, positive behavioral supports for our students, I've gotten those communications out to parents, many parent meetings, just to build relationships, and, you know, a lot of goodwill. And so, we're moving along, and within all of that, the district has wonderful resources for us to use for curriculum, for us to use for looking at data, and of course, making sure that the numbers aren't all that we look at, and that we look at both kinds of data, quantitative as well as qualitative, and making sure that what we see in classrooms matches what we're trying to do. I would like to start tonight first, though, with the school improvement plan highlights, just talking through those. And of course, we try to match our goal... district goal is curriculum that is accessible and reflective of all students. And we're saying by June 2025, all Rhine Gold students will demonstrate 10% growth on the following assessments, DIBELS, IREDDI, HMH, and MCAS. Um, and do feel strongly that we can, can do that and do it quite well. Um, one of the things that we've done, and that our central office administration has helped us with, is aligning everything and making sure that all of our teams feed off of the same principles data, um, thinking thoughtfully about how the leadership teams cross each other, how our professional learning communities cross our leadership teams, how everything meshes and becomes woven together. And so within that, we're running meetings that sometimes will sound similar, because they're taking place at PLC and at ILT, and the, the goal there is really thinking through critically what, what is best for students, what does that look like in a classroom, and how, um, how we can improve, um, just all aspects of a child's life. And, and working concisely with, with staff is exactly what we've done with, um, a lot of expectations upfront. Backed by excellent resources, of course. Um, our second goal, all Rhine Gold staff will improve a range of tiered academic supports, scaffolds for students, and that is anything from modulating your voice to draw attention to you, to having students work in cooperative groups, to a um, an alphabet strip on your, on your desk, to a writing folder that has um, you know, a, a word bank, or some sentence stems for you to use. But again, when we talk about scaffolds, we're talking about how we bring learning to a child, and how we are accounting for their, their specific barriers, not uh, not a one-size-fits-all, but a variation, or like a menu, that children can choose from so that they can access, have an entry point and an exit point. They don't all have to be the same. And I know even for myself, sometimes when encoding becomes too much, I will take my computer, go to the basement, and use Google Docs and do voice to text, because I can. And it helps my brain relax for a minute, and then I will go and edit that, uh, voice to text note, or whatever I made, and use it from there. It's, whatever works for the learner is what we need to do. We are in control of our environment, and we need to make it suitable for our students at all times. Um, our third goal, um, stems off of the staff development and a diverse recruitment plan. All instructional staff will participate in professional development in services, in service of all students. We've, we've held some really good professional development thus far this school year. We're looking forward to tomorrow as well. We have done some, uh, some work on assets-based learning. We've done, uh, some good work on positive supports. We've done some excellent work on our START protocol, in which we recognize students that may need a little more support, and what are we doing about that as a staff? How do we meet those needs? By talking through, uh, how we are changing the environment? What strategies and supports are we putting in place to help a child? We're using new uh, software that, uh, actually hardware, web-based panorama, that is outstanding. It's really the uh, the, the biggest data collection that I've seen that has it all in the same place, that we're using, you know, for the START meetings, to record the data that the students are giving us through formative and summative assessment, as well as um, a plan to help that child. And that can all be done right in panorama, which is pretty neat. And we've been using it so far exclusively for our START meetings. It's going very well. And so a new, a, a new resource that actually has lesson plans and strategies tied to it, with all of the data in the same place, is very exciting. It, it's very exciting, and it's fitting well so far. Um, of course, the professional development has to be thoughtfully planned out, and through our PD planning, our ELEPD planning, we, we keep those plans and submit those plans, and talk through and get exit surveys on the PD that we provide. It's, uh, it's all done very well with, uh, the alignment from, from district administrators to help us. Um, our fourth goal, strategic and effective use of all resources. And of course, just like, like Casey and Mrs. Tenga said, we, um, we have to use the resources that we have in the building, especially the staffing resources wisely. And sometimes it is all hands on deck. But there are key, key uh, staff that can help in, um, in difficult situations. You have to know who those are, and how, and how they can sometimes bridge and cover another need when you need to do that. And so we're, we're doing some of that this year. I'm very pleased with the hires that we've had, and we'll continue to move along, um, with making sure that we do use our resources correctly, and that our goals and all of our uh, data is trending in the right, in the right trajectory, which I think some of that you'll see in the next few slides. Uh, district goal number five, this, the extension of that to our school goals is student attendance. So we're saying that our student attendance will improve as compared to the 23-24 student attendance data. RES staff will increase family engagement opportunities through multiple events to create a culture of engagement and purpose. Um, that needs to happen with small and, and large events. And so far, Deb Jeffries has actually come in to work in one of our classrooms. I actually did a really nice presentation with our, with our third grade students, and um, the rock project there, and then, and bringing it back to the assisted living, was very kind of you. And it was, it was great to see that you were there, and that you spent time in, in the building, you know, substantial amount of time. And was, you were, it was 90 degrees that day, and you were there and smiling, and you were very pleasant, and so I appreciate that. Thank you so much.
I came back again, but I didn't get to see you that day, um, with the math activity as well.
Thank you so much. Um, you know, good things happen for the right reasons. This summer, I was contacted by um, someone who, who was in charge of a trust for a former um, Rhine Gold teacher, whose name is Leslie Ellen Swanson Beederman. She had over thirty pieces of artwork that they didn't know what to do with. So we took them all at Rhine Gold. And so now I have these thirty pieces of artwork, but wouldn't that be a wonderful way to get community and set those all up? Have a little gala event, invite any uh, teachers from, from that timeframe to come out. Those are the types of things that people will remember and put a, a little excitement into the air. We do look to do that. I'm hoping that Taylor Penning and I plan something soon. Um, you know, you do have the little art show in the spring, but I'd like to do it before that. And these thirty pieces of art burning a hole in, in my mind, I want to get them out there for people to see. We did have our um, little Halloween dance. It was lovely. It was this past Friday night. My wife was supposed, was supposed to join me, but she was ill, and so I went by myself. I didn't have anyone to dance with. It's okay, though.
Solo.
A very fun event. Solo, yes. Um, our last goal for the school improvement plan is all, is off of the community and stakeholder engagement. All staff will increase positive two-way communication. This is our school goal now. All staff will increase positive two-way communication and engagement with RES families. And the way that we've approached that is to make sure that teachers have a, a variety of ways that they're talking with parents, either by phone, or by opportunities such as our Title I reading staff has created websites where they have interactive materials that parents can use with their children at home, which I think is wonderful. Um, and again, engagement never ends. It's something that you continuously have to work at, and continuously have to make sure that there's connection, even right down to um, having the PTO consider a bingo night, which is simplistic, but it's so much fun to see the children get excited. Anyway, those are our goals for our school improvement plan highlights, and there is more detail to those action steps in your packets. Um, I am now going to talk a little bit about our attendance protocol, and Dr. Jeffcoat will go over the MCAS results. Uh, we do calibrate our attendance systems as well, and through work with the leadership team, we've talked about making our attendance protocols consistent so that we have good things happening. And these are the simple steps that we use for our attendance protocol at Rhine Gold. Student is absent from school, someone from school will call and make sure we know where the child is. Um, if there are three consecutive days absent from the school, we'll have one of our secretaries call home, email. All communication will be documented the next two for in our permanent database, they're the, the big database for record-keeping. Um, step three, if there are five consecutive, non-consecutive days, the homeschool liaison will contact the family guardian caregiver, discuss the importance of attending school, and set up an attendance meeting with the parents, guardian caregiver, guidance administration, and mock family resource center to offer support, and an attendance plan is created. When eight absences from school is recorded, um, again, our resource officer may be utilized. Um, the homeschool liaison will definitely be in touch. Guidance and or administration will, will make a home visit, and speak with the family regarding attendance, and provide any assistance needed. And then ten consecutive, non-consecutive days from school principal letter will be sent home, emailed, informing the family of legal responsibilities. At this point, an ADF may be filed, or a 51A, if that is appropriate. And then step six is to highlight the ongoing group attendance progress once a month on the main office bulletin board, right outside of the Rhine Gold main office, and include on school-wide monitors outside of the building. Then the next slide just shows you the, the positivity of um, the data from one of our bigger elections. Our attendance rate year-to-date is, is up 0.6% at 95.3%. Our chronic attendance rate year-to-date is down, as compared to last year, it's minus 2.8%. And that bodes well for continued progress. So far, we're seeing some good progress, and I'm excited about that. And you cannot see it there.
On my...
There it is. Yep. And so excited about the positive progress year-to-date, and we'll continue to look for sustained improvement. And now, moving over to, to MCAS. Dr. Jay.
All right. Thank you. Uh, so, you know, as we, as we look at the MCAS data, um, you know, I think with Mr. Mendes and I being new, you know, we are trying to get into classrooms as much as possible, so we can not just observe what the data is, which is abundantly available to everyone, but also that we could, uh, you know, come in and get to know the staff and the students, and their experiences that they have. Because our, our ultimate goal, sure, is that MCAS improves, um, but it's also that the student experience improves. We want classrooms where excited learning is happening, where students are curious, where learning is engaging. Um, and I think John and I both believe that when that happens, and when students are engaged and excited in their learning, that the MCAS scores will take care of themselves. Um, so, you know, as we come in, you know, we want to make sure that we have a significant amount of experience being in classrooms to kind of earn the right to have conversations with teachers and about teaching and learning. One of the two of us attends the PLCs every week, so that we can be a part of those conversations and build, uh, build that professional relationship, so that we can, uh, build something together for our students. Uh, so the MCAS data, um, you know, we did a pretty thorough analysis as an admin team, but also we engaged PLCs, and we engaged the instructional leadership team in looking at patterns in the data. Sometimes I think MCAS data can be overly examined to a point that, um, you know, it went up a percent here, down a percent there, and, you know, when we look at what the scores tell us, um, you know, is that trend data that's really critical. I think Desi acknowledges that as well. Um, and when we look at the trends, uh, the grade five continues to be a bright spot for improvement, especially in ELA. That, um, you know, that, when we break, break down the numbers, um, the fifth grade ELA um, is at least on target, or even exceeded a little, uh, where the state is for meeting exceeding expectations. Um, we've also used this data to really drill down and look at, you know, what's the next step, because the data can be daunting and overwhelming, and it's not really useful unless it's actionable. Uh, so we had each grade level and their PLCs look, um, and use a, a protocol where they were in questions about, what does this data tell us? Uh, we brought that to ILT, and we have agreed upon, we agreed that vocabulary seems like a common, um, common challenge with a lot of our students for, for a lot of reasons. Um, and that we're in the process now of developing a schoolwide focus on that, um, with the ILT, but that, that, there was a common theme, whether it be math, or science, or ELA, that vocabulary is something that we can all gather and focus on to not just better the student experience, but also better the MCAS data as well. Um, the subgroup data, um, you know, shows some strengths. When we break down the subgroup data, the, um, you know, again, it's a, it's a three-year trend. Um, so we were, we were really kind of comparing, um, the, you know, for, for each trend, if it's red, it's because it was a downward trend. If it's green, it was an upward trend based on just the last year. Um, and you can see that, um, I'll start, start with the, uh, the area that we can strengthen is IP504s, that, um, really, when you look down, um, our MCAS data, that was an, an area that, um, we can strengthen and improve. Um, and then we had some strong data with English language learners. Um, and, and, um, you know, also, you know, some, some strong, uh, spots in with our, um, economically disadvantaged and our, um, Hispanic Latino students as well. Uh, and, you know, obviously, the, all of this goes into, um, and every other school really broke down, um, you know, what goes into the number, but our, uh, progress towards improvement was at 46%, which puts us in the moderate progress towards target. Um, and, you know, I think that as Mr. Mendes and I start the school, we, we are kind of getting a feel, uh, building relationships, um, understanding the needs, um, the unique needs of our students. Um, you know, I think that we only look, you know, for areas where we can come together, collaborate, and improve for the betterment of, of our students and the families that trust us.
Absolutely. We're energized, and things, good things are happening. I liken it to an infancy, right? We've been crawling now for the first, uh, six to eight weeks, but we've just stood up, and we're going to be walking all over the place. And soon we'll be running. So we're making, we're making improvements, and, you know, improvements come slowly sometimes, but we're, we're staying at it. And, uh, it, it feels good. It feels good. The energy feels right. And, uh, the meetings that I've had with parents are priceless. They're all, we're all in good faith, and, and, in a way that would help a child, which is, which is great.
Thank you, Mr. Mendes. Questions for John and... Questions for John and Chris? Dr. Knight?
I just want to say, Principal Mendes and Dr. Chris, I couldn't get the last name.
It's okay.
Welcome. And I hope you're here to stay. We need you. The students in Pittsburgh need you. And thank you for, you know, the confidence and, you know, I'm looking forward to seeing great, great, great things. Thank you so much.
Thank you for the warm welcome.
Yes, thank you. Ms. Lindsay.
How many students comprise the student body?
We are currently at 688 students.
688?
688 currently. We did go up a bit this year. I believe it was a little bit lower last year, just 10 or 15 students maybe lower.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions for the Reinhold team?
Thank you.
Great. Thank you both.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you to all our elementary schools. We'll give you a round of applause. I appreciate the team staying. You guys are now dismissed. You can go home. We'll see you at 8:30 for PD tomorrow. All right. Thank you. So, just a reminder, tomorrow is a no-school day for our students. We have a professional development day from 8:30 to 2:50. Professional development is happening in all our schools. So, if you are around and you have some time, stop by and see what's happening in our buildings. And I just want to thank Glenda and her team for putting together the professional development for tomorrow. They did an outstanding job and they've been working, it seems like for the last month and a half on this. And I'm sure you're happy to actually launch this and move forward with the delivery of professional development. So, thank you, Glenda.
Yeah.
What's a good time?
We are learning all day from 8:30 until 2:50. The learning looks different for a variety of different groups. This year, we started launching out some choice-based professional development for educators as well. So, you know, trying different things, got some feedback from people last year, really looked at what our needs were. Yeah. And we worked really hard on this. Since last year, we've been working on our PD for this year. So, I'm excited. I'm excited to see the launch. And the professional development is also not just for educators. We're leading professional development for our administration as well.
Yep. Tomorrow, we'll be working with, I'll be with the principals tomorrow, all eight principals. And we'll be working in the morning on learning how to give feedback and have conversations with our teachers. That will be our morning session. And in the afternoon session, we'll be actually working on teacher evaluation and actually writing evaluations for teachers and working on how to give that directive feedback. So, that's what tomorrow will bring for our principals.
And Jeremy has sessions as well.
Jeremy's going to be working on safety tomorrow.
We have lots of learning happening across the district.
So, please stop by if you have time. You're always welcome.
And I'm sorry, what about the learning in Jeremy? I said Jeremy's also leading some sessions as well. So, I mean, across the district, every single department is engaged in some professional learning.
Yeah. Tomorrow's going to be, Jeremy will be working on safety and rolling out our new security system and all that. New training's happening tomorrow. So, Jeremy will be doing that. So, we're all busy tomorrow.
We'll be spread out.
Come and see us if you can. The last item for tonight's agenda is just our grant acceptance for the year for all our federal and state grants. So, as you can see, we have about eight grants that you need to accept. We have our Title I grant with an allocation of $2,852,858. And that's to support all math and ELA remediation at all our schools. Title II, sorry, our next one is our 240 and 262 grants at $1,873,953. That's to support our special education students in our district. Then, it's our Title II grant for $284,980, which will support our professional development and our mentoring program facilitation for new teachers throughout the district. Our Title III grant in the amount of $160,196. And that is to support our English language learners throughout the district. And then, our last title grant is our Title IV grant in the amount of $209,075. And that supports three things throughout the district. Well-rounded education opportunities, students, safe and healthy, safe and healthy students, and supportive and effective technology. And then, the last three grants is our, we have our Perkins grant. And that is in the amount of $64,349. And that supports our career and technical education throughout the district. And then, our early college support grant for the amount of $75,000, which supports all our early college initiatives at the high school level throughout the district. And then, last but not least, our multilingual newcomer and homeless support grant in the amount of $50,000, which supports the increase in homeless enrollment of newcomer multilingual learners throughout the district. So, those grants are all up for acceptance this evening. Yes?
Superintendent, that's a lot of money. Is it possible for us to get the person in charge of compliance to maybe come to some of these meetings and, you know, give us a report as to, you know, this money being used?
You mean for titles? I'm here at every meeting, so I oversee all the titles grants. And you can ask me anything you would like about the titles.
Oh, okay. Because before, I had met with a young lady that was the person from the compliance.
Oh, that's Callie.
Callie.
Yep. So, that she can, you know, just to let us know, you know, that the money's being used, you know, for these different things because, you know, there's not a lot of money beside this that's going to be out there, you know? So, yeah, so, you know, I would like to see that. Thank you.
We can do that next time and go over the.
Yeah, absolutely.
Auditting process too. I mean, we go through pretty extensive audits on the grants as well, especially the federal. So, yeah, we can certainly talk to her about that.
And we have a breakdown of how all the title grants are used and we can show you what the money goes to. Yep.
Yep. And I can definitely, sorry, I just wanted to add, I can definitely talk to you about the process because when we are, you know, Callie definitely submits all the grants, but there is a big process that we do with our curriculum team in terms of making decisions for, at least for Title I, II, III, and IV, how those are utilized and what resources we use those for. So, I'm happy to answer any of those questions. But yeah, we can definitely have Callie here.
I think Jim and then Lindsay.
On this handout that we have in our packet, is the McKinney Vento.
Oh, I missed it on the back.
The back and it's not listed under the action item.
It isn't. Can we add that now? Would that be okay if we added that now?
I think we probably have to amend.
We have to amend it.
Is that the $50,000?
Yep. We didn't flip it over. No, it's the McKinney Vento grant for our homeless students. We got a grant for $30,000 and it didn't make the agenda item for voting. My apologies.
No, I just wanted to make sure that.
I didn't flip it over. Sorry.
Didn't we do that last meeting?
I.
The agenda that was submitted to City Hall has the McKinney Vento on it.
The agenda that you have in front of you does not.
So, what was posted to the public has the.
To crack them out.
Yep. I see it. And I'm happy to show it to you on the city's website if you'd like.
We, I think we voted last time to approve to actually submit the grant. This is accepting.
Okay. Yeah, I know because I saw it.
It's sometimes confusing.
Because I put it on a different list.
You give us permission to apply for the grants and then we have to then accept the grant. So, we actually get permission twice.
Okay. I'm sorry. I did have a.
Yes, Lindsay.
LEAs. Can somebody fill me in on LEAs?
Local Education Agency? Did I get that acronym right? I did.
Thank you.
Yes.
Which is us.
Which is us. That's us. Yes.
So, the, so plus the $30,000 for the McKinney Vento, that'll be under action item.
Yes.
24-432. And that's on the revised.
Revised agenda.
Agenda.
That was in your email.
Yes.
And we can double check that.
No, it is.
Yes.
It's there?
Yes, it is there. It's on the revised agenda. So, that brings the total of these grants to $5.6 million. Is that normal?
Yeah. So, these are all our federal, these are all our federal grants and state grants that we get every year from the state that helps us in our school district. A lot of the title grants, like the biggest one, that $2.8 million, that is actually what runs all our intervention. So, that $2.8 million, that pays for all our interventionist, our math and ELA interventionist throughout the district. And that pays their salary and their insurance benefits. That comes out of that. So, that's, that whole funding comes directly from there for them. So.
Okay. Great. Is that, is that all?
That's it. That's all.
That's it? Only $5.6 million?
Only.
Okay, great. All right. So, back to our agenda. Okay. So, we have action items, many $5.6 million of action items, 24-432 before us.
Make a motion to approve action item 24-432.
Motion in second to approve 24-432. Any discussion on the motion? All right. Does this require a roll call because it's so big or can we just approve it by voice?
I don't believe it requires a roll call because of the amount. We can if you want.
No, I think that's fine. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
That is unanimous. It is unanimously approved, 24-432. And that is the only action item on our agenda.
That's it.
So, we have other business. We have none. And on our revised agenda, we do have an executive session for contract negotiations for FEA contracts. So, we will need a.
Move to.
Motion to.
Move to enter executive session. Second.
Motion in second to enter executive session. Does that require a roll call?
It does.
Okay.
Mayor Squalia?
Aye.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Dr. Knight?
Yes.
Mrs. Jeffries?
Yes.
Mrs. England?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. That is unanimous. We will enter executive session and then we will not be returning.
We will not be returning.
To, there will not be any further information discussed in public session. All right. Thank you very much.